Public hearing to order for 467 North Maple. The city has approved public notice of a public hearing tonight regarding the consideration of annexation of property located at 467 North Maple Avenue to the city. 467 North Maple LLC, the property owner has petitioned to annex the property to the city. Can we have a roll call, please?
Oh, yes. Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina? Oh.
No, he's not.
I didn't realize we had an empty... Oh, he's going to get married, that's right. Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman, uh, so, uh, excuse me.
Woods.
Thank you. Woods.
Yes.
Did I call you? Did I call you?
Yes.
Okay, you're here. Everybody's here except... Let's do it this way. Everybody's here except Messina.
Alderman Messina.
There you go. Mayor Police.
Here. I declare quorum present. Let the record reflect that notice of this hearing was duly published in the Daily Herald newspaper. A copy of the published legal notice will be made a part of the record as Exhibit A. The property bears a common address of 467 North Maple Avenue, Wooddale, Illinois. Any individual present tonight who would like to present testimony concerning the proposed annexation agreement and annexation must be first placed under oath. I'll also ask that you please raise your hand to be called upon to testify. We'll now open the hearing. Ms. Chrissy, can you please present background information on the annexation of this property to the city and provide information relative to the annexation agreement before us this evening?
Thank you, Mayor.
She's... I just asked the attorney that. He said she's just giving background.
As you noted, this is a public hearing for an annexation agreement. However, I'm going to review the other requests for this particular property. The property is located on the northeast corner of Maple Avenue and Elmhurst Street. As you can see by the blue outline here, these are our current municipal boundaries, so they are... This property is contiguous. The property is improved with a single-family home, a detached garage, a shed, and an asphalt driveway. The property as a whole is considered a zoning lot because there's actually two underlying lots, Lot 7 and Lot 8, for this property. And because of that, the petitioner has requested rezoning from R1, which would be the default zoning upon annexation, to the R3 single-family zoning to be able to build on the second lot. As you can see, the R3 zoning designation is actually consistent with the size of the lots adjacent to it and consistent with the neighboring zoning classifications. The CDC heard this case on July 18th for the public hearing, and they did recommend approval of the rezoning. They found it was compatible with the surrounding zoning and land use classifications, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan for single-family residential, and then consistent with the UDO. In terms of the annexation and the annexation agreement...
Excuse me one second. Since this has become lengthy, the attorney would like to swear you in.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do.
Thank you.
Then relative to the annexation agreement, there is currently a water main along Elmhurst Street, and then sewer connection is at the rear of the properties across from Elmhurst Street. The requirements for the annexation agreement, as was the case with our last property that took advantage of the annexation incentive program, is that within 90 days of execution of the agreement, we'll connect to city water and sewer. This property is within the 250 feet of sewer connection, so they will be required to connect. However, since the CDC meeting, the petitioner has decided that it may not be financially solvent for him to connect, or, excuse me, to build on both lots, renovating the existing home and then building a second home on the corner lot. So what we've done is, in the annexation agreement, we've provided him with two options should he decide that he wants to construct on that second lot. Either to extend the water main along Maple Avenue, which would allow him to then build on that second lot, or if he wanted to just connect the existing home to city water, then he would need to consolidate the lots as part of that. And as you'll recall, these are the same terms in terms of what the city has agreed to waive and then also reimburse, waiving the annexation fees, waiving the tap-on fees for connection to city services, up to $5,000 for the connection to city services, and then the city to patch the street. And then here is just the property that will be annexed. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment concerning the proposed annexation agreement and annexation of the property located at 467 North Maple Ave... Avenue, Wooddale, Illinois?
Yes, Mr. Calero and myself.
Okay. Swear them in, please.
I'll keep it short and sweet. Kenneth Johnson, 191 West Irving. We concur with staff's recommendation, the recommendation of CDC. I did think, however, it'd be helpful, Mr. Calero, this is his first time developing in Wooddale, if he gave you a brief introduction about himself and his company.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for letting me speak with you tonight.
Excuse me, could you state your name for the record?
Robert Calero.
Thank you.
My objective with this application is to take an underdeveloped property and bring it to its full potential while adding value and tax revenue to the city of Wooddale. This will also allow other families to take part in the annexation process and avail themselves to all the benefits that entails. I have over 20 years-plus experience in doing real estate development, including 30 single-family homes, 15 apartment-to-condominium conversions, three new multifamily unit condominium projects, and a 40-unit townhome development. Scope of the work at 467 North Maple would include, on the existing house, the connection to the city water and sewer, and also remodel an outdated property, adding a fresh and modern feel to it while updating it to include all modern amenities and conveniences that the, you know, today's busy families enjoy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who should comment on this? Okay, there being no further public comment, I will now entertain a motion to close this public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. The motion is carried. The public hearing is now closed. Next, I'd like to call to order the city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Here. I declare quorum present. Please stand during the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I need a motion to approve the city council minutes of July 21st, 2016.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? I did have one resident, Fred Weishaupt. Did I say that correctly, sir?
Yes, sir.
At 175 North Edgewood Avenue, if you could please go to the podium. There you go.
How you doing today? I'm here on behalf of the Potter Street Project. I've lived on the corner of Potter and Edgewood now for 25 years, almost 26. I'm only coming here because I want to speak on behalf of myself and my neighbors who kind of agree with me. This whole thing that's going on across the street from my home, we have good news trucking driving over my yard. They're cutting down, hacking the tree next to the woods next to them. Their guy at 4:00 in the morning ritually racing his diesel engine on his truck, and I can hear him in my house with the windows shut. That's one of the reasons why I'm here. The second reason why I'm here is Soto Recycling is out of control. That whole project is. When I moved here, one building was there, it was Meyer. When I moved where the trucking company was, it was Doc Severson. Building the other side where Soto's headquarters is was an empty lot, okay? I've been here a long time. I'm only bringing this up because I feel my neighborhood over there is going to hell. People come over there, I've picked up a six-foot piece of steel out of my grass, cut my yard, okay? There's garbage all the time on the ground. There's no consideration for anybody in town. They pull semis up, they drive in my yard today even, backing up their trucks, not caring about anybody coming along. Potter is why I'm here. You know, I feel... I moved here because I love the town. It was a great... It's a great place. But when I see... I look out my door, and there's old junk trucks sitting in their lot for weeks and months, okay? I'm hoping we can clean up there. The only other issue I have on our block would be on the corner when you get to that stop sign, if you've ever been that way, is you can't see what the cars there are. All I ask is, you know, they used to park cars when I first started moving here, they parked everything in the back gravel lot. Now everything's on that side where you get to that... I ride a Harley, guys. I've almost been hit about a dozen times in the past two years. Plus, I drive my car, and I fear for myself, not count my wife, my son, or anybody else that's in the neighborhood. But that's why I'm here to talk about it. I want to just speak on behalf of me and my neighbors. I mean, even the guys across the street from me, they don't speak English, they're from Poland, they're great guys. They got a sign literally nailed on their tree that says, "Please turn your engine off to save our trees," because they were constantly running cars. They start slamming garbage at 6:00 in the morning in that lot, and their sign says they open at 7:00. I don't know any ordinance, I know nothing, I'm just a person in town. But I just want to let you guys know, I mean, if you can clean that side up, which I've seen, you know, been talking to about... I'm not trying to run somebody out of business, but I think one business is too big for the area we're in. The other guy, he's new, I've talked to him about driving in my yard. I still got the ruts in my yard to this day, and that happened in the winter, and we even sent pictures to our alderman. So, I mean, that's why I'm only here, is just to speak on my behalf of my neighbors. If you have any questions, I can answer them. Like I said, I've been here almost 26 years, I've been living in town. I've seen every business come and go.
Thank you for your comment, and we are working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, you can leave if you like. Any other residents wish to be heard, or citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Okay, I do have a letter here, actually came from one of the neighbors in that area. We know the city of Wooddale is working on a beautification project for a commercial area of Potter Street to help address some of the ongoing issues that the residents have here. These include such as cars parked all over the street, the stretch of Potter from Central to Pine, all the garbage and nails on the street, and the line-of-sight blockage when trying to make a right onto Ash, to name a few. We support our elected officials and ask the council to move forward with this project. We understand the council is doing everything they can. This was just anonymous. I have one other written communicate, this is just regarding driver's licenses, we're going to post this on the website. Real ID Act compliance, Secretary of State's office uses new process for driver's license renewals. We'll have this on the website. I did also receive this letter from the Wooddale Bowl. I'm writing today to request a refund on the outdoor event license we purchased for our car show. The show has not been able to be executed due to construction on Irving Park Road. It seems that the car owners do not want to drive through the construction with their cars. For this reason, I am asking for a refund of $325 in fees that we paid. Sincerely, Mike Malone. I understand we can't discuss it this evening, but it'll be on the agenda. Okay, you want to copy this and then give it to Jeff? We have to... All right. Next, under Mayor's report, I do have a proclamation. Proclamation honoring and congratulating Casey Passion of Casey's Barber Shop on his retirement, whereas the Wooddale City Council and the city of Wooddale recognizes Casey's Barber Shop as a respected and valued business in Wooddale since 1971, and whereas Casey's Barber Shop has provided full barber shop services, including haircuts and shaves, and whereas Casey's Barber Shop has become a destination for locals, and Casey has heard customers tell them of new jobs, career changes, and other major life events, whereas Casey's Barber Shop has been a Wooddale staple for 45 years and will be greatly missed. Now therefore, I, Mayor Nunez, and the police do proclaim congratulations to Casey's Barber Shop for 45 years of dedicated service and wish Casey Passion the best in his retirement.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and the city council, thank you for honoring me. I never thought this could happen, but I thank you. Wooddale has been very good to me. Wooddale helped me a lot when I moved the business from the other place to the... on 535, 375. And I don't know what else to say, that I made a lot of friends in here over the years in this council here. And I'm going back to Mayor Mazuka and... and so many, so many friends that I made in town, in the business. I have a great respect from the police department over the years, the friends that I made. Benowitz especially, and my friend Greg here. And I just want to say thank you for the honor that you gave me. And I keep this to my heart and for all the good things that have happened with that for me. It was my second home, Wooddale. I only went home to sleep.[1118.04][1118.04](laughter) After that, you know, 8:00, I was here until 7:00. So I spend more time here than I spend with my wife.
All right, next, I'd like to thank all the volunteers that worked Prairie Fest this past weekend, all their hard work. I know we rained out two days, but it still was a lot of work. Thank the police department, Public Works, the Prairie Fest Committee for all their efforts, and of course sponsorships. The entire council, everybody chipped in. We had a nice event, residents really enjoyed it, and just a thank you to everybody on that. Oh, I'm sorry, chief, forgot the fire department. And the fire department, sorry. Was writing my notes quickly, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Sorrentino, yes?
You know, I just wanted to add to this, I know it's after the Prairie Fest, but the National Night Out, Public Works went beyond the call of duty assembling that place in 100-degree weather. You guys did a fabulous job, and I think it was a very successful outing, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew Public Works really stood tall that day for us. So kudos to all Public Works wherever we are.
And the police department for feeding everybody. They were busy on that steamer. Next, city manager to report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item. Chief Vesta is going to give a brief report on the accreditation process, and I thank Chief Vesta and the police department for their continued good work with this, and this report is very good news.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Manager. This past weekend, Wooddale Police Department received our sixth accreditation award, and it's been several years since we've kind of explained to council really what the accreditation process is all about and why we do it, and how it benefits the city and the residents in town. So I'll just, a brief presentation on kind of the background and how our assessment went. So accreditation dates all the way back to '73 when the federal government wrote a long report saying that one of the things that police should do to become more professional is become accredited. And then four agencies put this together, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, Noble, the Organization of Black Law Enforcement Officers, the National Sheriff's Association, and the Police Executive Research Forum. They came up with the first accreditation standards and formed the commission that is currently Calea. So we currently have to live up to 484 standards in the current edition. Some of the goals of it, you know, to strengthen crime prevention and control, really to formalize our management procedures and administration on how we handle different types of cases and delivery of police service. It touches on non-biased and nondiscriminatory practices to include how, you know, searches, racial profiling, all that stuff, improve your service delivery. It solidifies working with other agencies and your agreements, making sure that you have all the legal stuff covered, boost the citizen and staff confidence, you know, bring us to a nationwide professional level, that well-being in the community, and assure, you know, not only you guys, but the other community leaders that we're doing, we're living up to the best practices in the agency. It really touches on nine parts throughout our whole agency, you know, just the roles and responsibilities, our organization, how our personnel are structured. The personnel process where there could be a lot of issues in, you know, recruiting, hiring, promotion, and discipline, if you don't do those right, they can cause a lot of issues. And then the high liability operations things, such as evidence, use of force, pursuits, you know, all those things. And you can see the other, the traffic operations, how we handle prisoners in our holding facility, and then just outside miscellaneous services. So who's accredited? It's a voluntary process. We choose to go through it. Council supports us with that, with funding for that. It's actually a three-year process, is only about $12,000, so it's not, for what we get in return, it's a very good value in our opinion, plus the time that it takes to maintain the standards. So about 70% of police officers in the US are covered, or work for an accredited agency, 10% in Canada, and, you know, in Illinois, there's 51 agencies. Wooddale's a part of this, Illinois Police Accreditation Coalition too, and so all these agencies that are accredited, we get together on a monthly basis, and they go over, you know, best practices. We have a listserv that if we... if someone's looking for some type of policy, or how do you handle this type of situation, we share a lot of information too with these other agencies. So the benefits, there's been several studies that your liability events are reduced in agencies that are accredited, greater accountability throughout the agency, not just at the first officer level, but all the way up through the chief. Make sure the best practices are in place. They're continually revising these standards for changing conditions or changes in law that come out. Improve morale, better manage department, and increase community advocacy and relationships with the community. So, like I said, we're in a... we just received our sixth accreditation award. We first received an award in 2001, and then every three years from that, we've gone through another onsite accreditation process. The last two, they came out with a new process called the GOAT standard assessment, and so in addition to looking at all our 484 files, which they do a lot of that ahead of time, they really spend a lot of their time here going on interviews throughout the community. They try and touch base with... if they can get to every person in the agency, they get to them, but they really verify that we're doing what we say we're doing. Like I mentioned, before the onsite, we send a lot of our files offsite to them, that they can review them, and we're showing proof in there that we're complying with these certain standards. And then they come in for four days. They came in in April for four days, and it's always out-of-state assessors, and usually it's not from neighboring states either, they want to make sure there's no relationships with these other people that are coming in to assess your agency. So ours were from Georgia and Connecticut. So they prepared a report, about a 29-page report, that they sent to the National Commission. And this past weekend, we went to Baltimore. You have to appear at a national conference after you're onsite, and then you appear before the full commission, and they do a hearing, they go through your report, they ask you questions, and then make a recommendation for accreditation or not, so. Just an example of what one of the standards looks like. This is dealing with use of force. And what they do is they don't write your policies for you, but they tell you what you have to address. So this top part here that's in italics, it says, you know, "Written report submitted when an employee discharges a fire." It lays all these things out that you have to follow, and then from that is how we develop our general orders. And what they'll do is they'll go through these general orders and say, all right, does your general order meet the standard that we say it has to? And if that does, then you also have to provide proof. So for every use of force incident we've had over the last three years, they have the right to look at any of those to see, did we do a force, use of force report? Did it get reviewed by the supervisor? Did I eventually review it and sign off on it? So not only do we have to say we're doing it, but we have to show the proof that we're doing that. So here's what the numbers were for our onsite accreditation. There's certain things that are mandatory, and there's some that are other than mandatory. You have to be in compliance with 80% of these other-than-mandatory compliant ones. We were actually in compliance with 96% of them, so we're well above that. But we met all 331 that we needed to, 82 of them that are optional, we met 82 out of the 85. We did have two recommendations for changes while they were here. One was dealing with our use of force report. The standard says that our general order has to say we do an annual analysis. We didn't have... we're missing one word of our... out of our general order. We had done all the analyses, but we just had to add a word to our general order. So that was changed while they were onsite. And then we had another one with a quarterly inspection, that we had missed a quarterly inspection three years ago, and we had been in compliance ever since then, so not a big deal. If we hadn't been doing it, you know, then it could have raised a bigger issue. So that was the only two issues that came out of the onsite. Every time they're here, we expect them to find something. If they're not finding something, you know, there's always a way we can get better, and we were very pleased with that there was only two, but we don't expect zero every time, even though we shoot for it every time, so. And then there's 66 of them that because some of the agents that... agencies that have two, three, 500, or 1,000 officers, they have to comply with some other things, or function, like we don't have a communications center anymore. So that communications chapter, you don't comply with because you don't operate your own communications center, so. Anyways, in their report, one of their last paragraphs, you know, they summed it up here, you know, accreditation really has become kind of a way of life for us. Most everyone that's here now, you know, 2/3 of them haven't started when the agency was already going through accreditation or been a part of accredited. So we were very pleased with the report, the assessors did a real good job, we had a good hearing before the commission on Saturday, and we received our sixth award. So what's next? We start the process all over again. We have to provide proof... We have to provide proof for the next four years that, that we're in compliance with the standards. We're currently reviewing all of our general orders again to see if there's, you know, do an annual review of that, to see if anything needs to be tweaking. CLEA is transitioning to a four-year process, and so every year they're going to have us send off a quarter of our proofs to be reviewed, and that'll all be done electronically. And then they'll be back out here in 2020 to, to assess us again. You know, we're just going to keep working to deliver better service to community, and, you know, proud of the members of the agency, they're all a part of this, too. They, they assist with putting together the proofs and finding proofs, and if we have a certain situation where we searched a car due to probable cause, you know, they're, when they write their report, they'll turn in a copy of that, knowing that we need to show that, that we did some of that stuff, so. Anyways, thanks for your time, just wanted to give you a brief update on the process that we go through.
Thank you, and congratulations to you and the entire department. Next, consent agenda, we have nothing. Committee Chairman reports planning and zoning, Alderman Catalano?
I have three, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to make a motion, an ordinance annexing property bearing the common address of 465 North Maple Avenue.
467.
I'm sorry, 467. Maple Avenue, Wooddale, Illinois.
Second.
To the city of Wooddale, Illinois. That's my motion.
Motion and second.
Sizmarski, second.
Yeah, roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Mayor police.
Yes, and that passes.
Yes, next is a resolution authorizing the execution of the annexation agreement for the property commonly known as 467 North Maple Avenue, Wooddale, Illinois. That's my motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Who's second?
Alderman Sizmarski.
Mike.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, we need a roll call.
Okay. Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Mayor police.
Yes, and that passes.
And last is an ordinance approving the map amendment rezon in property commonly known as 467 North Maple Avenue, Wooddale, Illinois.
Second.
That's my motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Who's second?
Gene. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Mayor police.
Yes, and that passes.
That is the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, thank you. Public Works, Alderman Woods?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, airport noise, Alderman Jacob, you have anything?
Just want to thank everybody that stopped at our booth. We put out the maps, we had them enlarged because a lot of people complained that they couldn't really read them, so a lot of people stopped by for that and put some important phone numbers on there. And also that our August 8th meeting will be canceled, our next meeting will be September 12th. It's ended by report.
Thank you. Stormwater Commission, Alderman Jacob?
No report.
Thank you. Approval of list of bills, August 4th. Alderman Jacob?
Make a motion to approve the list of bills for August 4th, 2016, for $379,036.16. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Sizmarski, second. Questions? Roll call.
Another roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Mayor police.
Yes. And number one, welcome to the neighborhood for annexing, and thank you. And we do need to adjourn into executive session, review official minutes, probable litigation, and pending litigation. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
First.